We probably represent the biggest land holders in the area, starting at about here, along this road, and going west for 10 acres, and then starting here on their west end, and down to the river for another 10 acres. So we've got over 20 acres of interest in this. And like I said, we don't mind you building something as long as it's within the law. But there's a requirement with the Little Falls Ordinance, 11.0525, that requires a natural landscape protection plan. I don't see it. Another issue is that when Richard Carlson met with the Belle Prairie Township people, he made the statement in the minutes that the city proposes that if a part of the lot is in the corridor, all of it will be subject to the standards. That is, the headwaters board standards. In those standards, and I don't know if you thought you were being benevolent or what in giving a 50-foot setback, but those standards require a 100-foot setback. When you do incorporate the things mandated by the headwaters board and the DNR, then they can proceed with their billing. I don't have a following proceeding, but follow the rules. Thank you for your time.
I'll try to make this brief. I know for a fact that this committee went through a thorough analysis before in denying the project. I heard someone say, "This is the same identical plan." Has something significantly changed? Because if it hasn't, then you shouldn't be trying to forfeit something that's not ready. It's an incomplete application. You cannot make a definite decision on whether or not this is really the floodplain. There's no comprehensive plan that's lawfully relied on. That comprehensive plan is not the law. Since then, there's been a Belle Prairie Township annexation, and according to Minnesota DNR, certain things needed to be done with respect to your ordinance. I just also want to point out that these people bought this property knowing before they bought, they should have done their due diligence. They knew what the zoning was. They knew the existing characteristic of the property. I drove by there myself today, and what they're proposing does not fit within the scheme of things. It should be upper-scale opposing if that can be accomplished. I don't know why. It feels like you're trying to appease them, and you're trying to rush this through. I just asked that you slow down a little bit, get the facts. Again, like Bruce said, we're not against development, but not something that's three times what's currently allowed by your zoning ordinance. And I hope it doesn't come to this, but I have to retain as litigation counsel. If you're not going to follow your ordinance, then we will have to file a lawsuit. I hope it doesn't come to that. Thank you.
You folks have a big obligation in determining the facts. We live along DeRozier, the residents that live along DeRozier totally support what Bruce is saying. We believe that we have to follow the rules. But we believe that in following the rules, and we sat down and we have met as part of that meeting with staff, meeting with the developer, that there were two options here. There was the option of taking that piece of property and subdividing it and putting duplexes on those lots, and what that would do to that property. But we were under the understanding that that followed the rules. But another option was a PUD. A PUD that, to me, is not supportive of them, but that that option could be placed on this property, and the impact to it would be less. We sat down and we talked about what conditions that would minimize the degradation of the properties along DeRozier is what we were trying to do, and that's what I think we expected these conditions would do. One of the big things was only one access onto DeRozier. That layout there is not what we were understanding. I see that in the conditions that are being proposed, that that's one of them. That's huge for us. If it doesn't make it, then our position takes a different turn. We're just trying, I think, and are in a position where we're trying to minimize what's going to happen to our properties because they follow the rules and they can do this. But if there's rules making so that they can't do this, then our position would have been different. It's your responsibility to determine that they are following the rules, and you're going to report back to the council whether they did or not. And that's what they're going to use to make their determination. So make sure you put enough effort into it in making that decision when you do it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And I just forgot to mention something. As far as the property values go, when I mentioned it earlier in 2008, when the interest rates were low and I tried to refinance, well, I did refinance our property, and I was told by the banker at the time that someone four blocks beyond us had sold his property at less than market value because he wanted to move to Texas. And so that dropped all the property values in the neighborhood. So not really knowing what the roaches want to build, if they want to cluster in there. It's not characteristic of the neighborhood. I don't think us as residents should have to pay for decreased property values. Who are the supporters here that want the PUD? Are there anyone? Is there anyone here? I mean, besides you guys?
Obviously, we spoke about, we speak on behalf of the 30 tenants that are going to become living there, just looking for a place like this in this town, which there aren't available. So you can call those folks, the new tenants.
But they're not here.
They're not built yet.
Yes, yes, the board here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I'm done anyway. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I got Bert Johnson and Betty here. I don't know, Bert, if you want to come up and talk or not?
Well, he's pretty upset we talked today. He lives exactly right across, right across from DeRozier, the first house on the left. And he's pretty upset about this whole situation. That's why they're here, because we had heard the Initiative Foundation is shipping in, they got 180 applications for Somalis to come here.
We're not going to bring that up in here right now, please.
Why not?
That's hearsay. It has nothing to do with the construction of, you know, the building of this and stuff. So, you know, we're not going to make it a racial thing or anything. And as far as I'm concerned, a Somali person that lives in the United States has just as much right to live anywhere as anyone else.
Alongside your hopes?
You know, I'd have to deal with this, but we're not going to make this a racial thing, okay? Let's keep it on this public hearing, and we'll go with that, okay? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I received a wonderful call regarding this.
Could you please read it out?
Yeah, I don't know if they're, I mean, just a summary of the phone message, but maybe they're here tonight. But it was from Shannon Udi, 6645 Riverwood, most in full support.
Shannon Udi?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Paul Neville, 16709, DeRozier Drive.
Hold on. Can you say that again for me? Sorry.
Paul Neville, 16709, DeRozier Drive. I have been working as a subcontractor for Rose Development, building these fourplexes. What's being sidewalked, these are totally, these are very, very nice places. They're very well-kept, very well-maintained. They're not just a little impolite, cause even very nice per treated. They're taken care of extremely well. They look good. You can go to Bowles, you can go to Rice, you can go to, who cares? They're everywhere. People love them. Not everybody can afford, they had huge down payment on the house, but yet they want something nice and beautiful living. And that's what these guys look like.
Thank you.
Excuse me, is he a city resident or this area? You are, okay.
Over the past two weeks, I've traveled the county and looked at the Roach properties that are in these different areas. And what I really noticed on them is that these properties are on the outskirts of these towns. Absol is on the south side. Bowles is on the north side. Peers is in that corner. They're tucked in a residential area. These places are not in residential areas. Motley is out on the south side of town. This project is right in the residential area, or single-family buildings there. Thank you.
Hearing done, at this time we close public hearing. 707.
This is an R1C, R1C zone. The zoning's not changing, correct?
No, R1C and then a green shaded area there is an R2M.
Okay, now that's the headwaters influenced areas.
Right.
One of the comments was that, and I don't know that it's logged anywhere, but that Richard Carlson had promised that if a portion of the property were in the headwaters, it would all be treated as a headwaters. Any comment to that?
I believe if I understand that, where they're taking that from, that letter was in regards to specific, they're, I hope they didn't enter too much detail. There's a lot of negotiation between the city and the headwaters board back in the late 90s, and then again in 2002, 2003, a 10-year annexation agreement was set up. And as part of that, they negotiated what the rules were going to be, what the ordinance were going to be within that R2M zone area. There was a specific discussion regarding if it's all in or if it's all in, pardon me, and it's all in. There was a specific discussion about what was going to happen in areas that were, had roads going through them, existed roads. So the Mississippi Boulevard was one of them, Yale Drive was another one. And some of those properties that were west of those roads, when you measured out 500 feet, a few of those properties had land that went beyond that towards the road. And so I took that to mean those areas, it went all the way out to the road. It was going to be zoned R2M, even if it was more than 500 feet. There was other areas that, when you went out to the road, you still could go further and still be within 500 feet. The negotiations and discussions that those roads were going to serve as boundaries, the sort of natural boundaries for stormwater flow and other things. That was, I mean, this was all before my time, and I've gone up with it, but I went up to at least two, maybe three meetings of the Mississippi Headwaters Board to mentor over all this, to make sure that I understood it and that they understood it, and we were all on the same page. And we came up with those specific roads serving as boundaries. We didn't have a road down in this area, so that was never really part of the discussion. So the assumption that as opposed to the 500 feet stops at that point. That's how I interpreted it. I talked to the director of the headwaters board, and he hasn't negated that, he seems to agree with it. So that's, I've done that, figured it out. That's why the green line basically stops where it does, that's the 500-foot mark, probably just.
Just another question on my part. Part of the discussions that were held with the developer and the, some of the neighbors and I assume, was that there was one access on DeRozier. This plan still calls for two. And hasn't, is this what is being proposed?
That's what's being proposed, but if you look in the conditions, the one access is what's being recommended as far as a condition on the condition of, so.
So if there's one access, that's going to change the configuration, I suspect.
What would happen is...
I suppose one of them would just dead-end in there, huh?
Yeah, just on the...
Like cold the set?
These ones would just dead-end. So it would not access off of DeRozier as what we're recommending. And you still have the west access onto DeRozier, as in the one on the rural drive.
The roads that are, have there been discussion about the type, but, now, these are private roads.
These would be private.
A little concerned about the private roads. I don't know if this will be the case here, but at some point, private roads become city I don't know how or under what conditions, but I'm assuming, and I would hope to get confirmation, that roads that would be proposed in here would be built to city standards? Would they be curved, gutted, full road width, 66, or?
Well, the width would be the right way. But being that it's private, you don't designate a right-way width. So the entire property is still under the same ownership. The width of the road, the physical width that you'd be driving on, would be consistent with other roads up in that area in terms of, if you're a rural road, so it wouldn't have curb and gutter, but the width would be consistent with DeRozier, Sunrise Division, and those various areas.
Would the developer be responsible for street repairs, snow removal, and so forth?
Correct.
A curb and gutter would not be required?
It would not be required.
How is storm water going to be handled in the absence of curb and gutter?
Currently, it's proposed to ditches, to use ditches to a holding pond where it'll infiltrate into soil and inhibit more tops than if there would be emergency outlet, which would be the natural drainage.
I think we had a drawing or something about, the holding pond is located, point L was a little holding?
Basically, in the center right there.
In the center there?
Yeah.
And that would drain how? Just permeate?
Infiltration. And if it gets large enough, then there is actually a natural drainage way that goes south this direction, towards the river.
Okay.
And that's all part, that would have to be in a storm, that would be half the party storm or whatever, mind you.
So storm water would be just the flow of the land to the holding area?
Correct.
Is there, in discussions, I suspect it's adequate?
In this area, if there's any material, I wouldn't have, I mean, obviously, I want to see the report before I approve anything, but I wouldn't suspect that we're going to have an air plant issue in this area with the...
So soil borings would be required?
We can require them, yes. We do look at the soil survey and that. Basically, it's a USPS book down at what is in there. Most of the Riverwood area has very sandy material. And I believe each copy of that here is well in the source report, which indicates that, again, it would be sandy material in that area. One of the very last pages, you can see, you've got the lobe sand, and then I believe that the infiltration. But generally speaking, with that lobe sand, it's very permeable.
So you've addressed the headwaters that the attorney brought up a little while ago. And this is where we're sitting right now as far as headwaters. Part of the property, the west and south there, is in that 500-foot headwater area, okay? So how would you go about making it so it's all right to stick buildings in a, is that legal?
Is it legal to put this in there?
No.
The, let's come to a place here. Section in the headwaters, section of the permits that lies here is, and so, I'm here on the zoom, so there's clustering and planning and development. So it says that if you're going to do a planning and development, you're going to have 500-foot of the, of the, that is, established, or, you can have one principal use for three-quarters of an acre. There's about one and a half acres based on our calculations, in the green shaded areas.
Okay.
Two principal uses. And as I stated in the staff report, it's having a discussion about what a principal use is. I talked to the headwaters board director, and he said that they didn't have any such opinion on that. So I think the two options are, you say a principal use is a fourplex, because that's what the principal option is here, or you can say it's one going each by itself. This is going back into the staff report. There's a definition of principal use of ordinance. Principal use, main use of plan or building, conditions, coordinate or accessory uses, may be either permitted or conditional. So that doesn't give a whole lot of explaining to it. I think there's some interpretation there in the statements. I don't know, I mean, this is, you know, I don't know if they're basically, pretty much two full fourplexes. So, you know, again, I talked to the director of the headwaters board, he's having dinner. I asked him to debate about this, fourplexes.
There's still the residential homes, I see, sitting in that 500, the 500 area doesn't profit a building.
Yeah, okay.
It's the number, I saw.
This entire project would be served with city water, city sewer?
That's being proposed right now. The council has authorized the office to go off the bids to give city water 10 gallons on the rural drive, basically to, essentially that west drive, which is always a definite sanitary sewer. So right now, that's what we're going over and getting bids on. Assuming the council accepts those bids, then there would be city water and sewer for the development.
That the development would take place without city services?
I don't know.
But it is part of the city, yes?
Yes, yes.
So wouldn't they be required to hook up to city water and city sewer with new development?
They would, yes, at least with a sewer. Water, you can, you can have your own well if you wanted to. I don't think that's a...
Any other discussion? There was something mentioned, I put a note down here, about property value. How would you go about doing a study if it does affect the property and would decrease the value of their homes by having this there? Do you have something?
One of the conditions that we have in there to try to address that is the market rate, not something that, not the, requiring the market rate, rents quota, or...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I know that there's people here opposed to this. On the other hand, I'm kind of toward, we have a zoned area in which development like this is permitted with certain conditions. And if those conditions are met, I don't know if we're, you know, you know, everybody says, "Well, would you like it built next to your house?" I don't know. You know? But on the other hand, as someone who's, if the area is zoned and this type of building is allowed in there, the fact that we don't like it is not part of the discussion. Trying to find a way in or out of this thing.
Well, I guess to pick up on your point, my understanding is, as it is right now, if this is denied, they can still build either single family homes or duplexes, correct?
Either or, yes.
Okay. And with this, will allow them the ability to, which, with the fourplexes, probably be a little bit more flexibility, at least, I don't know, if it's lands maybe, or?
At least a more open in clustering and control with that term already. But yes, based on preliminary sketch that we can't look together, because I know that was going to be a discussion on how many units could fit in there, is 31 realist or not? And I'm going for maybe around the number that was 34 or 36, but I remember it was more than 31 developers asked for. So that's what we felt, 31 necessarily wasn't out of line because if you go to the duplex situation, you're still allowing that same amount of units in that area.
Hearing done, I'd like to entertain a motion now.
Come on.
Motion made. Second?
Second, so we can get some discussion going here. Now, is the motion to approve with the conditions?
Correct.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? I'd like to hear the conditions, to read them off one more time.
Want us to read?
Would you, please?
A condition number one, that the approval of this development is for 31 dwelling units and one common area only. Any proposed increase in these numbers shall be subject to a new conditional use term request in public hearing. Two, that the applicant shall have no more than two fourplexes, each fourplex being one principal use within the R2M portion of the property, which is the area looking five feet of the Mississippi River. And three, that the applicant shall have a survey of the property completed and a final plan filed at Morrison County Reports Office. Four, that the minimum setback on all nulling units shall be 50 feet from public roads and 40 feet from all other property lines. And five, the minimum building in the property will be maintained within the building units for all property lines of 25 feet. The property department shall be advised by maintaining existing trees as much as possible, where necessary, by planting new trees with a minimum height of six feet. The meditative buffer shall be maintained indefinitely by property lines. Any areas of this buffer which become ineffective, either due to trees dying or root causes... Any areas of this buffer which become ineffective, either due to trees dying or root health, storms, et cetera, may be planted with minimum six foot tall trees within thirty days of the land, will be notified by the landowner's service or by major first if the damage occurs during the year. Number six, that the applicant shall reconfigure the road layout so that there is only one access point allowing that road to drive, located approximately nine hundred feet west of Riverwood Drive, and one access point to longer to which. Number seven, that the applicant shall submit a stormwater management plan to the city engineer for review and approval. The plan should be approved and implemented prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy for any building. Number eight, garbage and recycling collection and mail delivery, if allowed by post office, shall be on common area within the development, not within fifty feet of DeRozier Drive or Riverwood Drive. Number nine, all buildings shall be stick-built, single-story construction. Number ten, all building exterior shall be earth-tall or neutral colors. And number eleven, no accumulation of junk garbage, noxious matter or debris may be retained of the property. All vehicles stored outside enclosed buildings must have current license and registration, be in a drivable condition. Number twelve, that the landowner shall ensure that full-time caretaker for, for the facility resides in the area, they will allow for a five-minute response time. Number thirteen, that dwelling units within the development be rented at market rates. And number fourteen, in the event additional development occurs to the west and is under the same ownership, the internal road shall be extended into that property such that one access shall be through every terrace. And the other access shall be at the intersection of DeRozier Drive and the Mississippi River.
Okay.
One more question.
Go ahead.
Um, I haven't seen a, um, a sketch of what the building proposed to look like. Is there, is there anything, did these have garages, several garages, double garages, double garages? And how many square feet are these units?
Would be even three government units that are on four three hundred square feet, uh, two hundred units are more allowed on.
Have these.
The city house is out of print somewhere, I know it's submitted, I don't have it.
Uh, shingle roof, metal roof?
Shingle, I have some shingles, very similar to what's at the old fairgrounds, uh, just the, uh, an upgraded version of that building, updated and upgraded version of our ones that.
Are you married to the land or Henry, Henry Circle there?
Or down by the dam.
Are those fourplexes back there on Henry Circle or?
There's actually some fours, some fives and a six.
Okay.
These are all identical buildings, those were, uh, a little bit bigger mix to fit in that site properly.
I don't know, any other conditions? Stand by my head, Mr. Dixon. No, we can put anything in.
Well, I'd like to address one thing is, uh, this is the second time we're hearing this. It was denied, uh, that was brought up earlier, but yet there has been some changes. Uh, the conditions have changed. One of the main reasons, I think, uh, we voted against it last time was, we have a whole room of people who were opposed to what they were hearing. You're going to kind of go with the flow of the people. Uh, we took all the other conditions into account and stuff, but it does make a big impact. And the neighbors all around it are totally opposed, which was what we heard the first time. Now we're hearing a little bit different because if there's some conditions in place, not all the neighbors are opposed. So, uh, that has changed.
So we still.
That's why we're all here.
That's not true.
Yeah.
Well, I heard Steve say if it met certain conditions, like one of the things he said was, if there are two accesses coming onto DeRozier Drive, he was in opposition. If there was a condition that through the discussion they had, that one access was there, then he would feel a little better about it. And all these other conditions that were just brought up came from the discussion the developer had with neighbors, uh, excluding the south, like one person said, and, uh, I guess what they're doing is looking what's going on there on the DeRozier Drive end and how much consideration was placed on the south end, so.
I think you should take ten minutes to read that lawyer's letter, how it was planned, he wants to do, how serious this matter is. I think you should read that before you make a decision.
And, like you say, we're a recommending board. Where the lawyers would come in is once the city council would approve it. If the city council approves it and feels they're going to go against the wishes of the attorney or Mr. Smith or whoever else is in opposition, then it becomes a, something that is dealt with between the city attorney and the lawyer and stuff. I can't at this point say what the city council's going to do. I can't say what this board is going to do right now, because, uh, we're just trying to get all the facts out of here. It's a very hard decision because when you're stuck in the middle of something that, you know, other things like this have passed in the past and we haven't had this much activity, as I would say. Uh, there's been discussions like a person said they went and looked at other roads developments and they're always outside of the city or, oh, that's not true, I live close to one on the west side, it's stuck right in the middle of a residential area. Truthfully, none of us are having any problem with it right now. Uh, is that fourplexes? Uh, there, what are them on the west side there?
Two of the classes next to each other.
Two places next to each other, yeah, it's almost.
The question I got is that when you read those conditions, just now, when was that meeting, when those conditions were set up?
I have no clue, I wasn't at it, I, uh, I mean, I'm asking the engineer.
That meeting, that meeting was the same one that, that you were at?
It is not, because we had nothing to say about all these conditions, nothing.
The neighborhood said they were going to discuss.
We were not invited then.
We were not invited to that meeting, this is why you're talking about a fifty-foot setback on DeRozier Drive. And I'm asking if this could happen, I'd like to see a fifty foot on the south side. You know, we're, we border them, they have DeRozier Drive in between them. On the south side, we border that property. North side, they have DeRozier Drive.
You were at that meeting though.
No, I was not at that meeting because.
And the neighborhood said they were going to have a meeting themselves to come up with conditions, and that's what happened. I got a copy of those conditions and then looked through.
Well, I think I called you, Mr. Kim, and on the telephone, because Mr. Smith had called me from California and asked me to go down and pick a copy of these conditions up that were done earlier that week. And you said, no, I can't give you this because you have to have a written request.
It's a data request, yes.
Yeah, but that was done that week, not the meeting on DeRozier Drive.
It was done, the neighborhoods met together, I was not involved at that meeting. They met together and came up with some conditions, provided those to us, and then we developed that from there.
We have never, ever been at a meeting with the Roaches.
Okay.
Ever.
That's been established, uh, that's something we'll have to bring up in the discussion here, you know, as far as the south end, if they're going with these conditions, apparently, what I'm seeing is they're not, because they didn't have their say. Uh, any other discussion amongst board here?
Just real quickly, I, I know that's not to scale, but we're talking the, in the shaded green area, I suspect that that property line is the south property line, and that's the forty-foot dispute area?
This is the property line.
Which one's the short one, sir?
Uh, that property. Can't see that. Right there. This is the property line.
That's the property line.
And it jogs up here and.
Okay.
And jog down.
And those, uh, the proposal, those buildings would be forty feet from that line, is that?
Well, with minimum required, if the conditions pass, it would be forty at minimum, uh, it could be more, but it's up to the developer.
And fifty feet off of DeRozier.
Fifty feet off of DeRozier.
So you're looking seventy-six feet off of DeRozier, yeah, if including the drive.
Fifty feet from the property line, yes.
So then you also have DeRozier Drive along with that. You have the pavement, you have the paved road plus fifty feet?
True.
Yeah, and we got property line forty on the south side.
Oh, Mr. Anderson, there's, there's no road on the south side.
There's an easement road that's sixteen feet, or the musky property.
That's not a developed road, is it?
No, but it's a lifetime easement for that property. Mr. Smith has no, no driveways off of DeRozier in his property, nothing. His drive, his address is Riverwood Drive on that house factory.
So there's plans to put another road along that south boundary line?
It'll just be left as an easement, perpetually.
Oh, that's an eas, so it's a.
Easement plus a road.
Service road.
So it's a walking path?
No, it's a driving service road to the garage from Riverwood.
Is it gravel?
No.
Grass?
Yeah.
Education?
Yeah, wheel track.
Trees?
A few to drive her out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
How far from, uh, that easement is a proposed building?
Um, well, this now here is sixteen from the road, where?
Well, if there's an easement, it's sixteen feet, forty feet to the property or to the building you're looking at, twenty-four. So that easement is twenty-four feet from the property line.
No, the building is twenty-four feet from the easement.
So where's that group?
You've got driveway, you've got sixteen, or you've got property line sixteen feet of easement, and then twenty-four feet, and you've got a building. Yeah.
Is the easement on the DeRozier property?
Say it again?
Is the easement on the, on the outline, DeRozier, uh, uh, Roach property?
It's on the south half of the property, the south sixteen and a half feet.
So the easement cuts across the south portion of the property on which you're building?
In places, yes.
Places.
This is the driving path right here. Which is not the best, just currently, um, road. Yeah, that, yeah, yeah.
Is there a driveway going in along these road too, the Riverwood?
Yeah, there's, we're supposed to have one coming out of Riverwood, yes.
So that would be sixteen foot plus the driveway and then forty feet?
Uh, I'm not, what's your question?
The question is, you got sixteen-foot easement road.
Yep.
And then you're going to put a driveway, which will be the same as the city street out there.
Not necessarily, it turns out.
Twenty-two or twenty-four feet.
It would be the same as DeRozier, you said.
True.
And so then we got forty feet beyond that, where they start, on the south side?
I don't believe so, the.
I think that's what you just said, though.
The easement is sixteen and a half feet.
Yeah.
And then you've got your twenty-four feet of open space before you get to your, your, your building, for the setback.
Okay, but where's that twenty-six foot driveway going in?
That driveway can go in, right in that easement, right at the very south line, if they wanted to, and that's something that still needs to be addressed. But it's my understanding they want it as far south as possible to line up with Elm Street on the other side of the road.
So then we're talking, we're talking twenty-six feet, and I'd like to see another hundred with the headwaters right there. So that would put it out a hundred and how many feet? Twenty-six feet? No, a hundred and seventy-six feet in. Coming off the headwaters, hundred foot setback. Because my property is headwaters.
Kim said there's a drainage ditch back there from that, oh, there's no drainage ditch back there, these are all crap. There is no ditch back there.
There was a ditch back there, excuse me, from, during the flood of seventy-two. During the flood of seventy-two, they did start drink, digging a little bit across there. But then it was stopped.
Yes, you know, a storm plan would have to come out, there's going to be drainage, that's, uh, that's a state law. So, uh, if that's not in place, none of the construction can happen anyway, so there's going to be.
We have drainage on this property, and he's not going to allow that. Raise your.
I mean, guys, we talked about it, I think that we should really push this restart button and run it the right way. Let's get it done the right way, make everybody happy.